Rise, face the flag. As we say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart. Okay, Jeff, do you have anything in addition to what's been posted here on the agenda?
I do not.
Okay. If no one else does, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
All in favor of motion to approve?
Clint?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Further discussion? All in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters, that would be me. After we had our closed-door evaluation conversation on the superintendent, I drew up all that information that we have concerning his goals and only his goals. And so I'll just encapsulate what conversation we had at that and eventually there's a letter out there that we'd all like to sign on that basically says we approve of that. The Board of District 252 met in closed session on June 25 to discuss the performance goals of Jeff Sampson. Here are the outcomes. He had three goals. Performance goal number one is outward communication to promote, inform, and celebrate our district. Jeff gave four school presentations on finance. That seemed to be a hot button for some people in the community although when there was presentation, he didn't have much interest in it. He also formulated our truth in taxation along with Mr. Davison. We had an informational session, a meeting, and a tour with the ag department. I think Luke, you were there for sure. They had some concerns about the reconfiguration of our building and how it affected them. They were more than satisfied. Jeff did a nice job on that presentation. He continues to be the school liaison for the EDA to discuss the mutual interest between the city and the district, and he has expanded our communication through social media and cable TV as well. So, performance goal number one was met. Performance goal number two, manage the long-term facilities, long-range facilities plan and budget according to the maintenance, including the maintenance program. As it says in the long range, this is a work in progress always. Along with the head of our maintenance and facilities, board reps, the superintendent has continuously advised us of our needs and priorities. Under his management, we will be completing the present project on time and under budget. So he's met that according to our conversation at our meeting. Performance goal number three, the continued implementation of our current strategic plan. Superintendent has continued to promote our career and tech ed programs and initiatives along with the building, maintenance folks and principals. He helped organize a very successful career fair. We wish he could have that again. The district continues to have a successful relationship with the city administrator and the EDA to foster and promote our community and our school district. So he's met that strategic plan conversation, and that's a work in progress. So it continues. Mr. Sampson continues to be a solid voice for our school. While some goals may be ongoing, he shows strong leadership and is a positive ambassador for our district. At the June meeting and evaluation discussion at that time, the board feels Mr. Sampson has done a very good job on the goal outcomes. We also recognize the entire office staff, administration, department heads, and education staff. The board recognizes that the team effort Mr. Sampson has promoted. Signed, Bob. So, again, we're focusing on the goals that have been presented and that the copy of that letter is circulating around for your signatures, and then we'll give it to Lori as it meets our obligation. Anything for you?
No.
Kind of hard to...
Thank you.
Any other input? Thank you for...
Just wanted to add, you're doing a great job. Happy to have you.
Thank you. It's been fine.
Thank you for submitting your...
Thanks for submitting this.
Facetious. Okay, moving on, reports and communications. Is this our meeting for that? I thought we had it last meeting. Of course.
We're only having one.
One.
Does anyone have a committee report that they'd like to include?
I think we're going to be talking a lot about facilities in this meeting, so unless there's something that you want to add, it's not in the agenda.
Nope, nope. Just the construction is going well. I couldn't say that'll come up here later on a few things, but on track as of now.
I just wanted to add one thing for the Ed Foundation. We had our first meeting with the new members present, so it's nice to see some new faces. Happy to see people willing to volunteer their time for commitment, something like that. We also set some days. Bomber Day is going to be September 5th and 6th, Poker Social, September 30th, and the benefit auction will be April 13th. Other than that, that's about it for that.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Clint? Any other committee?
No.
We're having the GCED meeting next Thursday, this upcoming Thursday evening. I can report on that later. Administrative Board reports, Jeff?
Yeah, I think the only thing ahead on my initial report was to get a construction update, and Luke was right, is that we're still on time and under budget. We do have a few things that we want the board to talk about tonight in regard to what's called EPAS, and we can learn all about EPAS when we get to that point. I mentioned, I believe, last month that the Goodu Superintendent and I were talking to the county board about the possibility of having them provide an SRO for each school district at their cost. I think those are... We've made it past the initial finance committee. We went to the committee of the whole, which is almost like their work session, so all of the commissioners were present. The Goodu Sup and I checked with them and informed them of what we were asking from them, and they didn't take any action during that committee meeting, but the superintendent from Goodu and I know that we have a few follow-up things to work on, to revise our plan a little bit, and bringing more people, working with our county administrator, which would be the superintendent of the county if you want to look at it from that way, and then also Sheriff Kelly and his thoughts on the matter as well. I left the meeting, and so did the Goodu Sup, feeling that it was pretty supportive there. Obviously, they didn't take a vote on it, so we don't know for sure, but we're going to continue to work on that and move that forward in the next month or two.
SRO, for people that are watching?
School Resource Officer. So, there's still, I would say, so...
Questions for Jeff on that? Okay, public input. Does anyone wish to speak to the board before I read that long paragraph? And I certainly can't. Okay. No public input. Consideration to approve the finance report.
Mr. Cashwell, I don't know if we had it last month, going to the new fiscal year, but now this is all the new fiscal year through. Maybe some highlights to point out there. IDEAS payments are the main generation of the funds that come to the district. Generally, the June and July payments are a little bit lower as they do a little bit of cleanup, and then we'll see as we get into August 15th, they start to pick up again for revenue. Funding in the state of Minnesota for IDEAS is 90-10, so you get 100% of revenue each year, but it's 90% of current year, followed with 10% from the prior. So, it works out, but that's how they do their cleanup at the end of the month, tie out as information and data flows in from districts, and there's a final closeout. So, it gets to be a little bit tricky sometimes, but it's not as bad as it was back in the days when they changed from eight to space around 60, 40, and we're losing some revenue sometimes. So, at least this one stays consistent, it's easier to account for. Another thing that may mention is the 2022 project reimbursement. What I just done is put in their cash flow that they've given us, so you'll see each month reimbursement and expense from that project. Right there, the $941,000, that's funds that are yet to be reimbursed to the district. So far, we've requested about $2.6 million on that project. We've paid probably about $3.5 on that project, and just terms of where cash flow is on that 7.8, roughly $8, $9 million that we have, including interest. But what we've been trying to do as much as possible is, as long as we're okay with cash flow, not draw as money those dollars in so we can keep our interest, and we'll be well over $100,000 in interest, and that'll help add to the project. So, a little tricky, last month it got a little bit tight before I pulled in some money, but that's a good problem for us then, to make sure we're doing what we can, to better ability to fund that project as it goes. A couple of things we'd see would be bus leases. We don't have them currently now, but if you would see maybe a... It should be a tech lease, depending on when we were at in the rotation with devices. But generally, at the start of the fiscal year, you'll see a lot of expenses going out of the door because some of the budgets open up, and that's where a lot of our leasing obligations start. So, the first one, I guess, would be that bus lease for bus number seven of one of three. Last new bus that we got was supposed to come last August, we got it in April. This bus was supposed to come in August, and it came in July. So, we'll figure out how some of that stuff works. So, we got a gas bus for our fleet, which is new for the district, about to give it a shot, see how that works, partly because of the cost of fuel and giving it a shot on that, but also the cost of the buses in general. We had been getting diesel buses for 90 grand. This is the gas bus, and it was all below about $125,000, the diesel being substantially more expensive than that. Talking Mandy, you know, the replacement of motor and gas, way less expensive than a diesel, but there's also the great benefit of the diesel, especially all in that sort of load. But regular chi in Seattle works for the district and have one on our fleet with the gas. So, kind of the band, you know, highlights in this part of the cash flow. So, any question to have, I can certainly do the best to answer.
Any questions for Josh? Now, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I'll make a motion, Secretary.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Luke on the second? Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for a separate action. We usually start with Jeff acknowledging the acceptance of gifts.
Yes, this month we've had one donation for $164 from Sue's Garage Sales, which were from the customer donations at their shop, and this is for the summer lunch program for Cannon Kids Snack and Breakfast. We want to thank them for their donation.
If you had a chance to look over the personnel and over the monthly bills, as soon as you're ready, we could take a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm with you. Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Further discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Old Business, consideration to approve the 23, 24 milk and dairy quarter.
The last one, we had some issues with our bidding, and so you tasked me with going out and soliciting bids, and so we get to contact five companies, and one came back with a bid, and that is highlighted in yellow there. And then there are some companies that are interested in bidding next year as well, but they're at their capacity for this year. And so we are recommending that we go with Prairie Farms Milk that meet our needs.
What again has happened with our relationship with Hastings? Did we have... Did they have something that we needed or...
We couldn't have, right?
They had company issues, I would say.
They were shut down for a while.
Long-term partners.
Right about the time that we were supposed to bid.
So, they were shut down for a while.
I think there's some changes and important to it, so it might have been... We haven't talked to the same people, so I don't know if it got off of their plate or how exactly it happened.
I would say they may come back to the picture next year once they get some things moving forward, and maybe the best way to say that.
And where or what is Prairie Farms?
Are there Woodbeard?
I believe so. I know that they serve districts in the local area, so they're good for sure. There's a lot of information on that sheet. We're going, I think Lori's talked about it or may have been mentioned here, but going to five gallon bays in the both lunchrooms. It won't be all five gallon bays, there'll still be some need for half pints, whether it be for catering or field trips or those sorts of things. So, it won't all be just the five gallon bays, but all the information there is actual usage of milk from last year, so you can kind of compare what it costs might get. You scroll to the very bottom of that document where it says historical data. The past year in milk, we spent $37,000, and then based on that usage, kind of gives you what Prairie Farms bid would come in at, whether it be half pints or five gallon bays. Five gallon bays is actually a little bit less for us buying a bulk like that, but it'll be our first year using it too. We don't know how much waste it'll be, or the kid puts a half pint in, they get just a half pint, or they get three quarter and fill the whole glass up, or how it works out. So, it's just estimated this kind of works for a bit. Much more useful when there are multiple bidders, when there's just one, you're just kind of there for your...
How will this work with the free lunch program?
So, we'll still pay that price we reimbursed for the...
So, has the state determined how much they will reimburse or not?
You know, I have a private question for Lori. Generally, it's based on the whole meal rate, not just milk, so it'll be a cost per meal that comes back to the district.
So, in the lunchroom itself, it'll be bulk milk?
Yeah, so part of this deal, a couple of different grants that this school received. The Berry Association has been very generous, grant from ship and greenery, but there also be... Now, maybe I have to get the machines for the bulk milk, the glasses and the racks to wash them, and there may be some increased costs and those sorts of things as well too, but in general, at least, I'm probably blasting in this neck of the woods, but not milk drinker, but it's much better tasting.
You just went down the knob.
I know. I know. Make a chocolate, I can drink that. But there is a much better tasting for my first kids, too, than they...
Oh, for sure. Okay, do we hear a motion to approve Prairie Farms?
I'll make a motion.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Other discussion?
I would just say thanks to Lori for going down the grant path on those machines, although she saved the district a lot.
Yeah, I think she got enough funding that actually it had only going to be one machine in each building, it would be two, so we'd plenty of capacity for the kids to get their milk and...
Okay, all in favor of accepting Prairie Farms quote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Second item under our Old Business is the consideration to approve EPAS repairs. This comes back to us after last meeting, I think.
Yeah. So, an update from what I put in my report, and Josh caught this in the actual bid, so if you go to the bid, you look at the bid, there's a community center and this school building base bid amount, which totals $64,700. And then, I'm not sure exactly what I was thinking when I looked at this, but I thought that the $132,000 total was for the painting and the repairs of the EPAS. Well, that includes the Woodpecker Guard as well. And so, instead of the recommending, I believe I put $200,000 in my report, I'm going to recommend that we approve the 132, 200, and then knowing that we have that $25,000 approval for the construction project, if there's anything that is more needed, then we'll have Dave and myself and Josh review that. And we would still stay in there. If it gets above 25, which it should, because it seems like they have a pretty... And this bid also not only includes the patching, the one-by-one patching that we talked about in the construction meeting, it also has numbers for half walls in here for the bottom part of the interior of the courtyard. And so that was in there as well. So, and I can't remember where I saw that. Josh, you ever seen this somewhere?
Pet holes and damage to this EPAS.
Yep, but there is also something about, oh...
Remove.
Probably lowered, yep. Remove the lower part of the panels that are water damaged from the inside of the courtyard. So, I'm assuming that that is all inclusive then, the 132, too? So, I would ask the board that you approve the 132, too, tonight? And that would include the Woodpecker Guard as well?
Is this all still within our final budget?
Yep, yeah, we're still...
We're still under?
We're still under, even if you approve this.
Did Dave have a question about covering up wet spots, for lack of better shape?
So, we had a discussion around the sheet metal panels, and we came to the conclusion that that would be a lot more labor-intensive, and also the question around covering up wet material, but I think there was more involved with studying up the walls to put those in and add to the cost of it.
Well, plus, we just needed to get more of a fine-tuned bid of what was all included, and if there was different things that were going to pop up, what would a panel cost? And so, I think we were able to get that all clarified now.
Yeah, and that's in this... Nope. That's in this document here that's in the board package.
And we needed to know what the removal process would be. So, were they just going to slap something over the hole, or were they going to cut it all out and clean everything up? And so, we got...
And that's a good point also, they're going to cut out a one-by-one hole and clean out any bird debris and birds or whatever else is being housed in there before they... They may re-insulate it again depending on the need of it, and then patch it, sort of sealed up, but nothing alive still inside.
Yeah, we're just preparing to make sure we don't have to out of bond up here.
And this is the recommendation of the Facilities Group?
Yes.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
With the removal of the trees out front, it certainly has changed the look of the building, and some of this comes into play there, is there things we can do within this process to make it look...
Dave's actually looking at different options to get, I don't know, coverage, you know, or at least aesthetically having a look.
Really has changed the look.
Yep, yeah, he's looking at different options for that. He said there's some really low maintenance stuff that looks nice that you could...
Okay. And plus, this will be all giving our buildings a nice facelift on the outside.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the, you know, coat of paint really does stuff. Obviously, we're doing more than a coat of paint, but it'll look nice.
But it's great to get this project done under the other budget.
Exactly. And this stuff lasted, what, 60 years?
Sixty-two years, I think.
Sixty-two was the original, so, yeah, crashed on 60 years.
And Kay had some experience with these guys doing that in the school.
Yeah. Yeah, they feel very comfortable with this group.
One way I look at this to make you feel good is that this whole thing can just be done with the interest money off that.
Close to it. Right.
Who's the Josh? Look for a motion?
I approve.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the EPAS repair bid? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under New Business, consideration to approve the community survey to be sent out to residents in September.
So, this is going to be, when I first got here four years ago, we did a community survey that really kind of kicked off, you know, where are we at, how are we doing, what can we improve upon, if you remember that from school perceptions. And so, this is using pretty much the same survey again, so because we had baseline data from the last time, and we can see comparatively how the community feels that we are doing. One of the things that has come up in the Facility Committee is to ask a question like we did last time about what we would get for community support for identified projects. And at this time, there is an identified project that is outside of the school building, and it is the activity area. And as you can see, this plan would show what a potential project would look like, and it's right away at the beginning of the survey. And then the other piece that I've added in also is another entrance to the elementary school that has been talked about. And the vision for these projects is safety and accessibility, the big picture views of this. We need to address that backfield, stadium field, if you will. Parking has always come up in question about getting closer to the back activity fields. Do we really feel that that addresses that? Plus, it also addresses the tennis courts that are currently in the condition that they are, that we've had trouble with over the past few years. So, and then obviously with the other entrance to the elementary school, this was put together by ISG late winter, early spring for me as we were discussing the housing project across from the school here about partnering with the city to see what we could do to get an intersection, put in there and have easier access to the school. Again, this is a very high-level drawing. Will it turn out this way? It might, and it might not. But the idea is still there, and ISG at the time felt this was probably the best way to enter into the school at this elevation, if you remember from the road, because as you travel west, it starts to drop off steeper and steeper. The path on the north side of the school into the east would be a lot more intensive, I guess is the best way to put that. And so, in doing some quick cost figuring, this would fit in nicely with this area here. And so, the point of this exercise is to ask the community if they would be in support of this only. This isn't a bond vote, obviously, it's a survey. If the community comes back in support, then the board would have to make another decision to see if they want to go out and actually go and do something like this. And then the rest of the survey is the same as the ones last time. The tax impacts are there from the project, I guess I skipped over that. And then the rest of the survey is the same as it was last time. Thoughts, questions about the potential projects or the survey?
No, I think it's great to do a survey. I think it shows the school or the district looking to be transparent on projects for one, and then also some honest feedback. You know, we set ourselves up for some honest feedback, which is good to get, just like we did with the students and the staff. So, I think it's transparency, I think it's money well spent. I hope people participate in it and fill it out some in that. This is the main missing piece for our facilities, and this accomplishes everything we're looking to do as far as the safety, accessibility, and our overall facilities. The longer we wait, the more and more it's going to cost. Those costs over the last two or three years have gone up dramatically already. Yes, we just had a bond not too long ago, but we need to tackle some of these things now, and...
These are some of the same needs as from the bond originally that failed at the beginning of COVID, too. So, these aren't really different ways. These are the same needs that keep coming up, and you're right, the prices will keep going up.
For now, we're looking for approval to...
Yep.
For the community survey.
Yep.
We have a whole nother conversation piece about the upcoming result of that survey. So, would I get a motion to approve the survey?
I'll make a motion.
Katie, on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Your comments are spot-on, by the way, on that. So, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? So, we have a motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor of the community, or the approval of the community survey, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four fundraisers. Reed, you want to tackle it?
Yeah.
Pretty self-inspiratory.
Got the list there, heard back, a lot of these are identical to what, a lot of these programs have been using in the past. We did get more of our groups on here, so a lot of the question marks are just, I have not heard back yet from those advisors, so if I hear anything more shortly, I'll bring that to you, once I hear anything more.
You can see a supplemental one. What you saying?
Yep.
Questions for Reed?
End to approve.
Wondering if there's any?
I'll second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Katie, to approve the fundraisers as listed. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four fall head and assistant coaches.
Still waiting to fill three spots, two in the fall musical, and one at the junior high coach level for boys soccer. I'm talking with Annie Peterson, our recommended director, she does have a lead at least for the vocal, and a hopeful for the assistant director underneath that band piece in Schedule C, and talking with Coach Wilber here, actively recruiting candidates, there is one, they're just checking their work schedule to see if they could make any kind of commitment there, so...
Three openings that we're doing to work on. Questions for Reed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Clint?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke, to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four fall head and assistant coaches that have been developed so far. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried.
Thank you to everyone that's willing to coach.
Yes.
That's very time-consuming and much appreciated.
Consideration to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four annual policies as shown in Policy Two-O-eight, the twenty-three, twenty-four mandatory policies, and revised policy five-one-five, protection and privacy of public pupil records.
Yes, these are annual policies that we need to approve, usually during this meeting, and these are updated with MSVA, with the recent legislative action, MSVA is still coming out with policy revisions for some of these, so just know that the revised policies are from MSVA, and so, it'll be this one that's usually an annual one that we have to do, and then the next item as well, so, recommend approval on this.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four annual policies? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four restrictive procedures plan from GCED.
Yeah, this is an annual approval as well, Sherry has updated this with GCED, and you can score this, you must approve this as the restrictive procedure.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Clint?
Yeah, Luke.
Luke?
I'll second.
Yeah, yours for me. I just got to draw arrows over the top now. Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the restrictive procedures plan from GCED for the upcoming school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four tennis court agreement with the city of Cannon Falls.
As most of you know, we share the tennis courts out here, and they provide help in keeping them maintained, and so, really the only thing that's changed on this agreement from last year is the date and the new wear.
I'm moved to approve.
Moved by Luke? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four tennis court agreement with the city of Cannon Falls? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution approving school district sixty-fifty-one GCED long LTFM ten-year plan with expenditure and revenue allocations.
So, for the next two items, the first one is involving with our commitment to GCED and providing LTFM dollars to them, and then our own LTFM plan, school districts are required to pass and have submitted their ten-year plan to the state every year by July thirty-first, and so, the first one here that you need to approve is for Greedy County District's LTFM ten-year plan, and this is a resolution.
And is this any different than what was done in the past?
No, I mean, it updates itself every, every year, but it shows the revenues and expenditures that we have.
Look for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Katie on the motion? Luke on the second? Other discussion? Katie, would you mind reading the resolution?
Sure. All right. Resolution approving school district number six-zero-five-one long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan, be it resolved by the school board of district number two-five-two, state of Minnesota, as follows. The school board of district two-fifty-two has approved the long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan for Good Hugh County Education District six-zero-five-one, facilities for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-thirty-three. The various components of this plan are attached.
Good job.
So, real call, would be Bob?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Okay, thank you, that passes by a four-zero vote. Consideration to approve the resolution approving school district two-fifty-two Cannon Falls LTFM ten-year plan, expenditure and revenue allocations. Same story?
Same story, but just for our individual district, I think I have a resolution there.
Look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Clint?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? Katie, would you read that?
Sure. Resolution adopting independent school district number two-fifty-two long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan, be it resolved by the school board of district two-fifty-two, state of Minnesota, as follows. The school board of district, school district two-fifty-two has approved the long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan for the Cannon Falls various school district number two-fifty-two facilities for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-thirty-three. The various components of this plan are attached. So, Bob?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Yes, that passes by a four-zero vote. Consideration to approve a one-point-oh FTE fifth-grade teaching contract for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes, this is for Amber Borgan, I recommend approval.
I will make a motion.
You made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Katie on the motion?
I have some kids who are very excited.
I'll, I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Other discussion?
Do I recognize that last name?
Yeah.
One of our fourth grade teachers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Distantly related?
Yes, very related.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the teaching contract for Amber Borgan for fifth grade in the upcoming school year. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. So, as you can see, informational meetings, what we got coming up next, Pam Alton Dorf is coming to visit. Consideration to approve the one-point-oh special ed contract for twenty-three, twenty-four, truth and taxation, we're going to set the meeting date for that, and anything else you'd like to have discussed or bring us up to date on, contact Lori or contact Jeff. Anybody wish to speak to any calls right now? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Clint on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of the adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished, thank you.